Superintendent Advisory Committee, who will lead us in our pledge tonight?
Now, if you please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now it's time for the Texas pledge.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Yes, and next, Mr. Board President, we have our Teacher of the Year presentations by Dr. Marina Blanchard.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Ms. Smith Faulkner, so excited and congratulating and thrilled to announce our Elementary Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jeanette Bray. Ms. Yeah? Ms. Bray teaches first grade bilingual at AV Cato Elementary and has been a CISD teacher since 2015. She has been team lead both at AV Cato and Joy James and received the Campus Teacher of the Year designation not only this year, but also in 2016. She, her dedication for creating a dynamic and inclusive learning environment, advocating for her students' needs and fostering strong relationships with students and parents are just of the few key factors contributing to her student's success and the reason for her nomination. As the Honored Teacher, Elementary Teacher of the Year for the district, Bray advances to the regional level where one exceptional elementary teacher will be selected as the Region 11 Elementary Teacher of the Year. Here's a short clip of when she was announced as the Elementary Teacher of the Year. Hey, guys! How are y'all? How are you guys? Good morning, everybody! Y'all clap for your teacher! Let's hear it for Ms. Bray! Give me a nice clap for Ms. Bray. And you gotta come over here by me. Come, first of all, come here. Today, I am honored to tell Ms. Bray she is the Elementary District Teacher of the Year! So, we have her plaque. So, Total Care has donated $50 in Amazon. Thank you! Yeah, al último, so last but not least, we want to welcome this monetary donation to you. It's a cash donation from Grand Canyon University and then also on behalf of all of the cabinet, all of the district, we're very proud of you. Congratulations! $500! $500! That's a lot of donuts! Lots of, that's a lot of donuts, Ms. Bray! Thank you. Very well deserved. We're so proud of you and all the hard, we want to acknowledge all the hard work that you do. And you've been in Castleberry, you keep hanging in there. We know that you're a great leader on your campus. We're looking forward to many more years. Thank you for all you do, you well deserve. One more time, guys. Help me congratulate Ms. Jeanette Bray. Another congratulations in store for, you know him as Coach Everett White. He's Castleberry ISD's Secondary Teacher of the Year. Mr. White teaches sixth through eighth grade, physical education, and athletics, and he serves as our Boys Sports Athletic Coordinator at Irma Marsh Middle School. Coach White has been in CISD since 2020 and has over 30 years of experience in education, 33 to be exact. White also received an award in his previous district, is it Klein? Klein ISD, I wanted to make sure I got that right, for exemplifying high-quality teaching in February of 2019, and that was presented by their school board. White believes that every student is capable and able to learn, it's a top priority, he says, of a teacher to learn the interests and motivations of a student in order to help them learn what is required of them. He believes in a consistent effort of discipline, management, and encouragement, which is also necessary to help guide students and be successful in school. So let's watch a short clip of Mr. White being surprised as the Secondary Teacher of the Year. I am honored today. I understood and know that you are the Campus Teacher of the Year for Secondary, but do you know, today I get to give you this award that you're the District Secondary Teacher of the Year? You're fixing, your hands are about to get full. You might have to sit that stuff down, okay? In addition, Total Care has an Amazon gift card for you for $50. And we have, you get flowers? This is from Grand Canyon University, and on behalf of all of the districts, we want to congratulate you. This is a monetary gift from Grand Canyon University, $500. You spend, you're here early, you're here late with the kids, you've been dedicated to the district. I watch you on the sidelines, I love your enthusiasm. You make me jump up and down from the stands when you're out there with our kiddos. That's exactly what our kids need. We are so glad you chose Castleberry. We hope you continue to choose Castleberry. We love you, thank you for all you do. Congratulations, well deserved.
The support that Castleberry ISD has shown me, and I don't plan on going anywhere.
Good, good. We don't want you, you gotta retire here, okay?
All right.
Congratulations. You know, yes. Mr. White was indeed surprised, just like Ms. Bray. He was called to the office to work on master scheduling, so I'm sure it was much sweeter after that. We're so proud of you, thank you. Help me congratulate them both one more time.
On behalf of myself and I'm sure all the board, we can't thank you enough for teachers like yourself caring for our kids. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Board President, I have brought some, a very special guest with me tonight. This year, we have a Student Advisory Committee that, y'all can go ahead and come on up, that has met with me, y'all can go ahead and line up, that met with me this year for about five times. They actually come in and we have lunch, and they're advocates, and they represent their campuses. If you'll go to the next slide, Angela, you'll see that in elementary, I have two representatives from every elementary campus that on behalf of the students at their campus, they advocate and share information on what they would like to see for improvement in the district. And you'll also see that we have representatives from the middle school and both Reach and High School that meet with me and they let me know what they would like to see for improvement in Castleberry ISD. Tonight, what they're going to do is they're gonna share some of those things that they would like to see changed. They're going to also not only share with you what they would like to see for improvement, but perhaps how they can solve the problem and what some of the outcomes might be based on how they would like to solve the problem. So I'm gonna turn it over to our first representative from AV Cato Elementary, and I'm gonna let him introduce himself and share his ideas.
Hello, my name is Ryan Walters, and tonight I am here on behalf of AV Cato Elementary. My problem to the school board is, unfortunately, the boys bathrooms do not have dividers between the urinals, and sometimes that's not always sanitary in our schools. My request to the school board is to hire more staff or have thorough trainings to better sanitize the restrooms in our district and schools. The positive outcome from this would be to prevent illnesses in the workplace and school environment and cause the school to do better with potential ratings and awards, then in turn encouraging more students to enroll in the future. I have prepared a speech that I will now read. I can speak for most of the students at my school and district and say that the bathrooms aren't monitored consistently throughout the day at our schools. This can lead to immature behavior in the bathrooms regarding some of the students. I believe that we can change this by hiring additional staff to better monitor or clean the restrooms in our schools. Hiring staff will cost more money, but the restrooms will bring better ratings to our school and help us attract more students, which will bring in more money. Another solution to this problem could be to introduce a course to custodian staff on how to better keep our bathrooms clean. We could do the same for teachers, except for they will receive a course on monitoring children in the bathrooms. This can help children understand that they are under surveillance, so it'll help them behave properly in the restrooms. Most students that can agree with me can understand that money may be a problem in this ordeal. Fortunately, there is an easy fix. After much research, I have concluded that fundraisers cost around $5 to $10 per dollar raised. Even though that the cost for Kona Ice or World's Finest Chocolate fundraisers can be a little expensive for the school, we can raise extra money by doing fundraisers with external services like Cystic Fibrosis Foundation or Red Cross. If we could work with the charitable services like the ones just mentioned, we could set up an opportunity for both the school and the organizations to earn money. I have also learned that most of all of the children in our schools very much appreciate our fundraisers and would love to help out with the events. I also see that we could benefit from expanding fundraising events like holding auctions and spread from organizations that could bring in more fundings. All of the reasons just listed can be concluded into one opinion. Better restrooms in all schools can lead to better school ratings and allow for our schools to earn more money to obtain more students from higher-rated schools. In conclusion, that I hope that this presentation can be taken into consideration between the school board and thought deeply about. Thank you. I am also here on behalf of Adley Stone, because unfortunately, she couldn't make it because she's on vacation. Her problem to the school board is that some students are not able to eat the school meals due to food allergies or health concerns. She, her request to the school board is that she thinks that the Castleberry ISD Nutrition Department should provide breakfast and lunch options for all students, including those with food allergies or health conditions. Her positive outcome with this would be that everyone, including herself, would be able to eat school-provided meals. For example, she has a digestive disorder. She must eat a high-protein and low-fat diet, which is often not an option served by the school. She brings her own breakfast and lunch from home each day. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Guerrero. I'm from Castleberry Elementary and is in fifth grade. One problem in my school that I would like to share to you is a supply shortage in different classes. I would like to request for you to restock supplies for different classes every semester. A positive outcome from having more supplies available is more opportunity for creativity of students and teachers. I have also made a speech that I'm going to say. Dear board members, first of all, I would like to thank you for everything you have done for us. Although school is awesome, there's always room for improvement. One way our school can improve is having more supplies. I believe that by having more supplies, students will continue to excel in learning. There will also be more chance of growth. For example, in PE class, there's always broken supplies. Another example of this problem is in art. In art class, there's always dried markers or broken pencils. I believe there will be more growth in students if there were more available supplies. In conclusion, I believe there will be more chance of growth in students if there were more supplies available for them.
Hello, my name is Elan Sinertia. I'm from Joy James Academy of Leadership, and I'm in fifth grade. So my problem is that some of the menu options for the cafeteria are not very well-liked, and as a result, students are hungrier on those days and a lot of food gets wasted. My request to the school board is that I think some food options that are not very, the ones that aren't very well-liked should be replaced, because not everyone eats the food that's served in the cafeteria. If we add different options, that would be more liked better, then students would eat the food more often and they would be energized for the day. Also, there's people who have allergies and they cannot eat certain foods as well, so. My request, my request is for, okay, for, for example, some of my friends have food allergies, so I think we should have more options that do not include, that don't include the stuff that they're allergic to. If we had more choices that were better for students, then I think we would eat the food way more and a lot of food wouldn't just be thrown into the garbage. Also, it said that students focus better on a full stomach, like, people say they can't focus on an empty stomach. On the next slide, I made a survey of nine fifth-grade students in Joy James. So as you can see, the tuna sub sandwich and the sun butter and jelly are not very well-liked, so I think maybe we should replace those with other foods that are more liked, like the ham and cheese sandwich. That's all. I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm also here to say Edgar's. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it. So what Edgar, his problem is that when students are outside at recess, they can get really thirsty. That's uncomfortable, inconvenient, and can be really unsafe. So his request is that he would like to ask, yeah, to install one or two drinking fountains outside for the students to use during recess. He would also like to request that the district install water bottle refill stations to limit the amount of plastic trash. The result would be that students would not be uncomfortable or risk getting overheated, or they would have to waste their recess time to go inside and get a drink. On the next slide, he researched a water fountain that's around $1,000. This is when he found about $800. Okay, I think that's it.
I'm Sophia Dell at Irma Marsh, representing the eighth grade, and I have discussed something that could improve Irma Marsh with my peers. They have brought to my attention that they should have a day in school where they wear pajamas so that they are comfortable in the classroom. While taking a break from casual clothing, this will provide students more school, allow students to get more schoolwork done. A positive outcome is that it will reduce in-school suspensions capacity and eliminate waiting for appropriate clothing changes.
I'm speaking on behalf of Paulina Callejas, and her concern is that kids require more social workers to provide a better school experience and the assistance that they need to make the students feel at peace. Students are uncomfortable when they are not supported, which is another reason they choose to stay at home. As a result of receiving truancy letters, attendance will increase and more students will be able to come for the assistance that they need. I'm Sophia Dell, also speaking on behalf of Trip, and his recommendation for students to have a five-minute passing period because as he brought up, he wants to bring up, he wants to bring up a survey during pep rallies. That way, kids can have to vote on whether they need extra time or they should stay at four minutes. By mentioning this at pep rallies, students will have more time to get to class. Less attention for students, more time for them to complete their task, and it increases tardiness rates are all favorable outcomes. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Evelyn Martinez, and tonight I'm here to represent Castleberry High School. The problem we currently have in the mariachi program is a lack of sources, mainly in instrument and method books. Many of our students have to share instruments with other students or have to purchase their own, but not all students have the opportunity to purchase their own instrument. My request to you is to help us obtain these instruments and method books. With the help of these additional resources, it will allow the program to continue, grow, and quality. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Haji Lagul, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Nayeli Aguilar. I'm from Castleberry High School, and I believe we should address the problem of how do we partner with other schools to get involved in more pathways that aren't career-based? We should open up to other ideas that are presented to other schools. Adding a cosmetology school would be an excellent example of a good skill-based training. For instance, at Northside High School, they have implemented a mechanic shop for students to be in. My request to the school board is to one day create a beauty school and an onsite courtroom. I believe that we should do this because I have many peers that have always wanted to be more inspired by the law school part of it, which Castleberry High School doesn't really offer that much. A positive outcome of this would be tapping into the aspirations of young students who are trying to discover their passion in beauty and law. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jazzy Rivera. I'm representing Reach High School. I am a recent graduate. I will also be speaking on behalf of Gabriel Garcia. A problem we have at Reach is we don't have opportunities to participate in extracurricular activities or have time to participate in recess or physical education. Our request to the school board is we would like to have flexibility in our schedule during the school day for extracurricular activities. Based on students at Reach that will be there next year, 71.4% of our students are in favor of using the game room or participating in extracurricular activities more frequently. 64.3% prefer to participate in Adult Team 101, which is learning to take care of personal finances, cooking, and becoming independent. And 57.2% of students would like to play basketball in the gym more regularly. A positive outcome to these activities and extracurricular activities will relieve stress for students, break up this school day to increase productivity and deepen relationships. Gabriel is someone who found out about the opportunity to come to Reach to accelerate his learning. As a result of this chance, he can get an early start in life. However, not everyone knows about Reach. Our request to the school board is that Reach is assigned to a counselor, which would help increase Reach High School's exposure to potential students at Reach High School. A positive outcome of this is more students like Gabriel, who want to accelerate their learning, will have a chance to do so.
I think it's a great thing, what you guys have done. It's a lot, it's a lot of really good stuff. And so for that, I thank you. I thank you for being willing to stand up for your school and being willing to stand up here, it can be intimidating sometimes, and you guys did really great. But more importantly, you got some really good ideas. I'm writing down everything. You guys should be proud of what you do and continue to do the same thing. I don't know if anybody else wishes.
All right, thank you, guys. And if you'll be seated, we'll take a picture in a minute, okay? So thank you.
Now we'll move to 8E, Multiplication B.
Good evening, Board of Education, President Tolliver, Cabinet, and Superintendent Ms. Smith Faulkner. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize the Multiplication Contest District winners in third, fourth, and fifth grades. This will be our seventh annual multiplication contest in CISD. It was created in 2014 in order for our students to show mastery in their multiplication facts. All students in grades three through five are given a one-minute fact test to see who can answer the most correctly. We have winners at the classroom level, the campus level, and at the district level. And the winners are, would my three, would my three winners in third, fourth, and fifth, go ahead and come on up, please, to be recognized? All right, I am pleased to present to you our 2023 third-grade district champion, Axel Sanchez. Axel attends Joy James Academy of Leadership and was able to answer 49 multiplication facts in one minute. I am pleased now to present to you the 2023 fourth-grade district champion, Alan Murphy. Alan also attends Joy James Academy of Leadership and was able to answer 53 multiplication facts in one minute. And our fifth-grade 2023 district champion is Elan Sinertia. Elan also attends Joy James Academy of Leadership and was able to answer 48 multiplication facts in one minute. Right now, would the families and teachers of these three students please stand and be recognized? And last, I would like to extend a thank you to the parents, teachers, and administrators who have supported these fantastic mathematicians. Also, a special thank you to Ms. Laura Depp, the elementary math coach, for helping me coordinate this year's multiplication contest. Thank you.
We've got some really smart kids here. Now we will move on to 8F, CTE recognition.
Good evening, Board President.
Good evening, Board President, Ms. Smith Faulkner and board members. Thank you for recognizing our C T E I B C students tonight. Go to the next slide. We have four different recognition, uh, I B Cs we're going to recognize tonight. And then I'd also like to just point out some of our state and national C T S O qualifiers as well. Um, as you can see, our Moss certification, which is Microsoft Office User Specialist certification, we had thirty-four seniors that graduated with this certification this past year. Now, um, in subsequent years, the state is sunsetting it, which means that they're retiring it. So uh, we won't be able to use Microsoft Office Specialist certifications in the following years, but it's still a valuable certification, which we are going to continue um because it is successful for our students. And then we also do the N C C R certification, which stands for the National Center for Construction Education and Research. We had ten seniors graduate with their N C C R Core Curriculum Certificate. And two of those have already been employed with Integrated Machinery Solutions and ASL. This is a picture of them this morning, the two boys on the left, and the two girls are also working in the office as well with them. And so they also have their N C C R core as well, so we're very excited about that. Our next, uh, our next two that we're going to talk about is our Patient Care Technician and our Certified Billing and Coding Specialist through the National Healthcare Association. We had eight seniors graduate with N H A's Patient Care Technician Certificate. And I'm going to call their names and have them stand up and be recognized for, um, they are here tonight with us. So we'll start with Marissa Bonilla, and if you'll remain standing. And then Emily Hernandez, Rayela Rodriguez, Kimberly Racho, Marcus Avia, uh, Louis, Louis Sevilla, I'm sorry, Louis Aria, sorry. Marcus was last year. And then, um, we also have Gabriella Salzar. And these have been recognized for passing their uh P C T certification. And then we also have um the Certified Billing and Coding Specialist. We had two seniors graduate with that. And right now, we have Fernando Rodriguez is here with us tonight. Yes, please stand up. Thank you so much, Fernando. And then uh, here's, we had an N H S pinning ceremony, uh, which we invited the parents in to kind of do a very special intimate ceremony for them, uh, to watch them get their pinings. And here's just a couple of pictures from that as well. It was a very sweet ceremony. And then here's our H O S A state and national qualifier. So we have students that have, they proceeded to the state, and then we have one student that's proceeding to the national the national competition here in June twenty-seventh in Dallas. So the three that we had for state were Gabriella Salzar, if you'll stand up. And then Jeremy Barnett, Jeremy Bartlett. And then Savannah couldn't make it with us tonight, so. And if, Jeremy, if you'll stand, if you'll keep standing, he's also going to be, like I said, he's our national. He got first place in patient care and he intends to take first place in nationals this year as well, so we'll see y'all next time. But I'd also like Kristen Flurelling, if you'll please stand up. None of this would be possible without her, so we really appreciate it. Thank you. And then lastly, our Deca State qualifiers, they couldn't be here with us tonight, but we had seven of them moved to the state finalist as well. And that is our C T E I B Cs and C T S Os. Thank you, guys. We, we really appreciate your support, and we will have more next year for you.
We need to now move to eleven A two.
Uh, we're moving up the information item for the recognition of new staff on the organizational chart, uh, Dr. Blanchard as a recognition. Okay? And then we'll take pictures after this. If you'll recognize our, yes. And then after this presentation, then we will stay and take pictures with all of the groups.
Come on down. You know, Ms. Smith Faulkner talks a lot about, um, you know, the staff that leave for a few years and come back. And so we were able to recruit back a very highly qualified, amazing person. We are very excited to have Morgan Long join our team uh with T L I. She's going to be our intermediate humanities coach uh to help support our elementary campuses, third through fifth grade. So again, super excited about having her uh come back and be a part of our team. So let me tell you just a little bit about her. So Castleberry I S D welcomes Morgan Long back as the district's next literacy instructional coach. Long returns to Castleberry, I'm going to say that again, she returns to Castleberry from Fort Worth I S D, where she served as a Student Success Specialist for the past two years. Only took her two years. Uh, she started her career in education ten years ago as an E S L teacher in China. So Fort Worth, the Fort Worth native stayed close to home and completed undergraduate studies at the University of North Texas, where she majored in education with a concentration in early childhood. She later headed east to New York, where she earned a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Relay Graduate School of Education. Most recently, she earned a second Master's, a Master of Arts in Reading from Grand Canyon University. Morgan Long has experience teaching all elementary grade levels in multiple states and countries. In Castleberry I S D, Long previously served as a reading specialist and has experience managing M T S S and R T I caseloads. When she is not advocating for a love of reading, she enjoys running on the Trinity Trails and traveling. Morgan loves living in Fort Worth because the city has much to offer. She is a lifelong learner that believes in educating the whole child. She holds the following quote dear to her. "Education is not preparation for life, but life itself." Morgan Long believes in an honor, it is an honor and privilege to raise up the next generation and to impact the lives of students and families of Castleberry I S D. She is grateful to the Board of Education for the privilege of coaching and growing in this new role. So I would like to welcome Morgan Long um to our T I L, T L I team. And I know that she brought a special guest, and I'll have her introduce your special guest.
Yes, with me tonight is uh Blaine Johnson, my boyfriend, and also a supporter of education.
Fantastic. Is there anything you would like to say?
I am more than grateful to be back here um and to jump back in and start my journey and continue loving the families and the students and working with people in Castleberry. So thank you for having me back.
Good evening. I am highly excited to introduce to you a highly respected leader in the area of special education. So Castleberry I S D welcomes Diane Burnett as our district's next, next special education coordinator. Burnett joins Castleberry I S D from Alvarado I S D, where she serves as the Director of Special Education for the past three years. She started her career in education thirty years ago as a special ed teacher in Wisconsin. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Special Ed and Elementary Education from Silver Lake College in Wisconsin. She earned a Master of Education in Educational Leadership through Concordia University. Additionally, she has completed several certifications in structured learning and behavior intervention for students. After completing her master's degree, Burnett began serving as an administrator for special education in public education. She has presented at national and state-level conferences, specifically in the area of purposeful inclusion for students with disabilities. Her greatest joy is spending time with her family and her three grandchildren. She also loves to travel. And she is excited for the opportunity to bring her skills to Castleberry I S D. She is appreciative to the board for allowing her to join the Castleberry team, and I am ecstatic to have her here.
I would just like to thank each and every one of you for this opportunity. I'm really excited. To the part of the Castleberry team, I'm also excited to work with Ms. Patton, so thank you very much.
Good evening, Board of Education, Board President and Board Members. Um, on behalf of Castleberry I S D, I am thrilled to announce the promotion of one of our own, Michelle Owen, as the district's first C T E instructional coach. Ms. Owen has served the Castleberry Independent School District for the past three years with the C T E team, teaching business. Prior to joining Castleberry I S D, she started her career in education in Fort Worth I S D as a C T E teacher for three years. Despite not having always been a teacher, Owen's exceptional leadership qualities have made her a standout among her peers during her three years as a classroom educator in the district. She consistently supports her colleagues with lesson planning, differentiated instruction, and takes the lead in facilitating professional development sessions. Moreover, she effectively utilizes her expertise in education technology and data collection to empower her fellow teachers on her campus to ensure their instructional practices. Prior to embarking on her teaching career, she was a successful retail and restaurant manager for sixteen years. I have to say, that's tough business. Owen started her education at the University of Texas, North Texas, and received a Bachelor's of Business Administration in two thousand and eleven. When she decided to become a teacher in two thousand and seventeen, she went back to U N T and received her teacher certification. She is currently enrolled in U N T, working on a Master's Degree in Educational Leadership and is working toward a Principal Certification. Owens has two daughters, ages ten and seventeen. Together, they create a loving household alongside her supportive boyfriend DJ in the city of Burleson. In her free time, she enjoys craft projects, including crochet and cross stitch, and playing various board and card games with her family. Michelle Owen is very thankful for the opportunity to continue serving the teachers and students in Castleberry I S D and the C T E department. We look forward to continuing uh working with Michelle Owen as she furthers her career here with us in Castleberry I S D.
Thank you uh so much for this. I am so excited that you um created this position. I feel like it was made for me. Um, so thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, I also wanted to thank Stephanie Martinez uh for giving me this opportunity, so thank you so much.
Just want to say thank you and welcome, and welcome back. And uh, we look forward to great things. Well, right now, we're going to take some time to, to create some memories and pictures of this, this time and event and these great things, so we're going to take a few minutes and take some pictures. Anything else?
I think we'll start with the Teacher of the Year uh first, and then we'll follow that up with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, okay? So, they left? Ah, okay, well, we'll start with the stu- the Superintendent Advisory Committee. Come on up.